Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that was my comment. Public comment. Do we have anybody that wants to make a public comment? Please Scott.
Just a few quick comments. The first one is, I hope that you don't frame or think what you've done so far is a failure. You've gone through a deliberate process. You've learned an awful lot the last six or nine months. And I think you're in a far better position now to hit the ground running and be able to negotiate a deal than you would have been had you just started a year ago or where you are a year ago. So the time that you've invested up in Elkhorn is, can be, especially if you view it this way, valuable learning and just part of the process. So, excuse me for being a little out of breath. The second is, I would encourage you to think, well, the, I'm composing myself, the, there are variables and then there's a constant. We already know what the constant is. You want someone to be able to take care of the debt load and to run the hospital and clinic. So what is the variable? And that's where you can really get the value in terms of the negotiations. You know I'm a real proponent of the Burton model, so I would suggest, or I would hope that you would consider the Burton model, and instead of holding off, perhaps even consider letting that be the model that you're going after and you can identify the benefit or the success of negotiations in terms of how strong and how vibrant a public health part of the deal could be. So if you come up with $10,000 a year that this board could hand out in grants to the local organizations, that wouldn't be much at all. If it was 70 or $300,000 a year, that would be great. $700,000 a year would be a home run if you could negotiate for when the time was appropriate, if it would ever happen that East Campus or half of East Campus would be set aside for public health purposes to help the encompasses and the YOCA's and senior centers of the valley. That would be terrific. And then the third component is, if you do decide to go down the Burton or some similar path, I would encourage you to, instead of launching into negotiations right away, go ahead and recruit the stakeholders and educate them about what the possibilities are. Get their input. And then, thank you. And then, once you've done that, you'll have done something that, you know, you've never done before. And that's educate and line up community support first. You'd be in a far stronger and better position to succeed when you go on to the open market to go ahead and negotiate. And also, once you have a new way of looking at things, take a look at Astria again. Maybe the circumstances will be different enough that they would be a good candidate again. Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we will move on. Topics of discussion: affiliation, debrief, and next steps. And I assume, Tom, you're gonna head this up? Or is Sarah coming? Sarah coming?
No, no, it's us tonight. It's us tonight. So I have, I have put into your packets and some information. It starts with the, this single sheet, this is work study session that has the recommendation from the negotiation team. And then it has some questions to help us with discussion. Behind that is a letter, email form, from Sarah Cave and Steve Hedner. And behind that email is a four-page summary of what had occurred really since we started to engage in more diligent conversations with Astria. And then behind that are reference documents that they refer to in that four-page piece, which really is a summary of the most recent work that they had done. The last piece I've included in your packet is the work that we did. You may recall that we worked on core principles and goals that then found their way into the RFP. And I thought it would be good to have that as a touch piece for us today. But I'll say that I actually sent President Norris an agenda for the meeting, and her feedback was way too structured. And I think she was absolutely right in that what I needed to do was allow for you to have the conversation that you need to have to talk about the impressions of how things have gone so far and use that to inform us about where we want to take this, this strategy into what we've been calling the Plan B phase. So if you, if you are open to it, we can go through these questions that I've put together, which hopefully will engender some discussion, but we're certainly not tied to it. You can throw some other questions in there too. But the first question I had for the group was, in terms of, this is our debrief, what caused us to walk away? What were the things that we were concerned about when it came to Astria? And I think the answers to that question could really help us zero in on some things that we want to avoid in the future.
Is it all right if we just kinda each go, if we go around the table?
What you're saying, I think, is suspend the rules, which the rules are the rigid Robert's Rules of Order. And this would be an informal discussion.
Yes.
And that requires to say suspend the rules.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. That's a good way to say it. I just thought maybe I could say something if Emma hasn't thought.
Then we should all go.
And maybe David and I should go first because we were on the committee.
Yep.
And I, and for, at least number one, what caused us to walk away? For me, they weren't giving us, weren't forthcoming with the information we needed, particularly financials. We were working during the summer requesting, and Sarah was requesting, and we just didn't get anything that helped us to go anywhere. That's my thing. But, David, do you have a thought about that?
Yeah, we weren't really getting enough information to evaluate whether they were actually creditworthy. We couldn't, we're talking about a really big decision.
Yeah.
To be made, and there's no way, based on the comments that we received from the board before we went into any discussions with them, that we were gonna accept what we had. We had to.
We're begging and we're getting.
Well, we had our marching orders from the board as a whole. And so we couldn't just take them, you know, their word that they were gonna come through with something. And I guess, and maybe they could have. I just, we sort of waited for a long period of time. We outlined every issue, and we just weren't getting the answers we wanted. And then I think the biggest problem that I had right from the get-go is they wanted to do a member substitution, which would take the vote of the bondholder to say it's okay to authorize this hole. It just, it was such a long shot, the way I looked at it. No bondholder, the bondholder's aren't gonna like approve people that are less than AA or A rated. They're just not. And I'm not saying that Astria couldn't have been A rated in time, but right now they're new, and I don't think bondholders would go for the whole bit. I think it was a long shot to, for them to even think that it was a member substitution. And right when they said, they put their heels in on that issue, I'm thinking, well, not sure if this is really gonna be working. And I was due to with skepticism at that point. And I think nothing really, in my mind, matched up to what the board directed both Daria and I to look at during this process.
I can guess, but could you define member substitution clearly?
They wanted to substit, they wanted to form a 503(c) company or corporation. And they wanted all the assets to be transferred to this.
Corporation.
Corporation, which would basically be controlled by Astria. And Astria then would get all of the, all of the assets and they would need approval from bondholders to do some major thing because the problem was is they were not AA or A rated. Like I said, I don't know if they would be an A or AA in a few years or not, but that would be a big concern for bondholders. And I, and the way I looked at it, I don't think they would approve it, and it would be an awful lot of money for them to go through the process. And we're talking maybe a half million dollars and at least six months. And I said, geez. I just thought it was more and more far-fetched, that method of affiliation. So I think if, if they would have said something like, we're willing to lease the premises, willing to make some concessions, if you're willing to make some concessions, let's get the deal done and do it.
Didn't even hear let's get the deal done at all.
No.
Not once.
No, no. So we really didn't have any other choice, but I was getting very anxious and frustrated and through the, for the last couple of months of the process because I was like, why isn't this done? Why aren't they answering? Why isn't this? And I made my comments very clear to everybody in our meetings, and especially Steve and Sarah. I don't think it was their fault at all.
Sarah Cave, Sarah Cave and Steve's fault?
Yeah, they were, they were just, they were trying to, you know, it's kinda like, I look at it in terms of negotiating a deal for a client. You start with all the honey and sugar you can to try and see if you can soften them up to, you know, do anything you can to get a really good deal. And at some point, we're not getting any offers, and not getting what you want, you kinda get frustrated. And not as in law. As in law, then you turn the other side and then you go after them, you go after the jugular. So I couldn't go after the jugular, but I felt like, that's what I felt like doing. So I, I wanted to, I mean, it just was not gonna work out. So that honest, straight-up opinion only, and the best I can give it in layman's terms. Any other questions? I'd be more than happy if anyone else has comments or wants to contribute at this time.
I would say too, some of the things that we thought we were going to do, we were gonna go over there, so for the privacy, that never happened. Trying to talk to people about when we could see, what would we get, anything we requested. I don't think we got one thing at all from that.
Very little, scant. According to our ex consultant, he said there wasn't enough to really make any critical decisions. So that was enough for me.
That's what, three months, four months? We were doing this? So for me, it just, it was dragging out. We weren't getting anywhere.
I was uncomfortable with, what I understand was Gallagher's writing to individual council members, that not all of them. I didn't get anything from him. But I think that he sent, John Gallagher sent emails or messages to encourage us to stay in to other.
He didn't send it. It's his assistant, executive assistant, that sent it.
I don't think I got one, if I, I think we passed on.
I got, I got something, and I let everybody know.
That's just not the way that we do business. The way it should have been done is send the email to the board president.
All the commissioners.
The board president can decide whether to distribute them to the commissioners.
Well, the only thing I can think about that is maybe is just trying to find out if he wanted to go any further, if anybody had interest at that point. If more than one person was not gonna be interested, he was just gonna hang it up too. So I don't know what the, I agree, but you know, I think that was probably the reason he was trying to find out. He probably knew that you were not a favorite, so I don't, I.
It's just an unusual way.
Yeah, I understand, so.
You know, I got one, and I basically said, I'm not responding to this.
No, so.
I got one, and I just am acknowledging that I received it, but that's all I said.
I didn't acknowledge.
So anyway.
Yeah, I agree with David.
I think he was trying to feel out, was there any support at all, I mean, for this long shot?
That's fine, but the way he did it was wrong.
I agree with Commissioner Norris and Commissioner Parker. It's one of the things that also, that I feel that, because they were not forthcoming, I feel like they have, they are suffering from a superiority complex, that we are second-class citizens here.
Yeah.
I mean, they look at that we're, we are needy, you know? And then I look at overall, where one of our goals is to have a branding, and they're so far away from our community. And I have not heard of any success stories yet, you know, historically. I don't know where they are. So I wasn't quite, I was adamant to say, well, are they gonna really push through with the, you know, million-dollar debt that we have? Firstly, they're, you know, they have no branding at all. I don't see any historical, you know, success story from, you know, even the three hospitals. I don't know, maybe if I dig in a little bit more, I might find something. And then, of course, the model that they want us to go, well, like David said, you know, you know, they wanna form a 501(c), you know, see? And I wasn't quite, you know, like, again, it makes us feel like we are subjects to them, you know? That superiority complex seems to be what I always say in my mind, like, but we do have a lot to offer, but they feel like we don't, that we really need them to pay our debts and that we, you know, and that, you know, without them, we're not gonna survive. That's why my question was, how are we doing last year? It looks like we are, we've done, we've made so many strides, you know, we've done operationally. I think, Mr. Parker, I'd like to commend you, you know, listening to the board about some of the issues that we have and acting on it. So, thank you. So that's, that's my take on all this. Henry.
John, I agree with pretty much everything that everyone said. I just felt like they wanted to take over, and that's not an affiliation.
Hostile takeover.
I could go into a little more detail, but I don't need to, I don't think. It just felt like they wanted us to come to the water trough and without concern for what this board or institution district thinks, because they didn't understand it.
Daria was at bat for the first attempt at affiliation, and that was with Overlake. And that was before the formation of the Eastside Health Alliance. So we were dealing only with Overlake. And my recollection was, that was the problem with Overlake. They wanted to take over and get hold of our assets and control our assets. Maybe you could comment on that.
No, that really wasn't the problem. I, actually, I think they were concerned about our debt. And they were, they were very concerned about our debt. I talked to Mike Marsh afterwards, and that's one of the things he said, is that when they came down to it, the debt was a real issue. And so they were trying to ask questions about the debt. How were we gonna deal with it? How, what were they gonna get for it? And even Dr. Winkoff could offer some thoughts, because she was on that committee as well. And I was still a newbie then. I probably shouldn't have been on that committee, but yeah, I.
They were also positioned to getting ready to go for bond rating, and because, because they're wanting to build the new tower that they're building right now, so that, that was even on the plate then.
So that would have made a difference.
They were very concerned about the debt and how that would impact their ability to get rated.
Yeah. And then I don't think our attorney at the time helped much either, because he had a temper tantrum, as I recall. So that probably wasn't in our favor either.
And that occurred before Tom ascended to his present throne.
Oh, well.
Maybe he has some recollection of the Overlake situation.
You wanna speak in here?
I do, I do. I'd love to, I'd love to answer this question first, and that is some of the reasons we walked away. I think there were a couple of really core issues around identity of the two organizations that weren't matching up. I think that we saw, time and again, them challenged with how to deal with our very public nature. And I think that they were very challenged also with how the district, particularly this board, saw itself in a post-transaction world. I think their vision of that was very different than ours. Their vision was that the district would diminish to a large degree and, and that anything with respect to public education and community health and welfare would be handled by them, and the district really didn't have a role.
And policy, basically. They would take over policy formations. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, just pretty much the district would become processors of payments. A lease payment would come in, taxes would come into the district, and the district would make the debt payments. And that was, that was, I think, the vision they had, in that they would be able to take on all, all responsibility and all roles related to health promotion, disease prevention, and treatment. And I think the district saw themselves and continues to see themselves as having an active role in the community, especially around health promotion, disease prevention, and taking on some of the public health issues that just about every community is dealing with these days. So I think there was that high-level impasse. You mentioned about trying to get information, and that kinda came in very late, as, as we were just coming up to the last board meeting and the negotiating team meeting. It was, it was a little bit of information, but it wasn't enough. That said, the information that did come, some of the financial information that Steve Hedner looked at, wasn't enough, as David had said, to give us a sense that.
What's gonna happen.
That was going to win the day when it came to talking with the bondholders. And then there were some, just some core issues around, you know, some major deal points that we had been communicating on, such as the fate of East Campus, the, you know, how much cash does the district need to operate? Some of these issues that we just were not seeing eye to eye on. So those were, those were reasons ISP was in, in terms of why the negotiating team decided to make that recommendation.
One last comment about that particular statement, though. I don't think they really gave us their stand on some of these core issues.
Oh, you're right.
They really, it was like, well, we have these issues. What do you say? Nothing.
I think, I'll make a comment. I think at the very beginning, when they said they were gonna take up our debt, I think that was exciting, so they felt like, oh, that's, you know, that's something we're gonna, you know, make it, you know? And I think that's one of the reasons that I, that they feel they're more, much more, you know, superior than us, that they, you know, we're really wanting somebody to, you know, adopt us and take care of us. So anyway, we have many quality people here, but they make us look like, I feel like, they feel like, they make us, they make us feel like we don't know what we're doing. I think that's my first impression, that, hey, we're just gonna give them all this information, they're gonna say, okay, okay. You know, they know that we are, you know, we're doing our due diligence here.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we're not, yes, yes.
They were not putting a value on the trained staff that we have for our swimming bed program.
Exactly.
They were not putting a value on the East Campus in retrospect of what is gonna turn out to be.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly.
They were not putting a value on the additional piece of property.
Yes.
That can be converted or built into a medical office. They were not putting a value on the size of this and what it would take to rebuild, the permits and everything else. They just weren't putting any value.
And they weren't putting any value on the community values.
Or on the board.
On the board as representatives of the community, because I think I said many times that we've not gotten one new patient as a result of their branding, and we'd probably lose patients. So branding was a very important issue. And if you look at this sheet, it's number three on here. I had thought that it was paired for number one, of course, debt reduction or control of our finances was number one.
Where are you looking at?
This one, where we may have our goal. Yeah, but branding was right up there.
It was, absolutely.
And really, they are still in an identity crisis themselves. When they submitted their proposal, they were Regional Health Yakima. And after they submitted their proposal, they had a consultant come in, they came up with Astria name. Well, Astria is a good mythological name. It means something to Italians and Greeks, but it doesn't really mean anything, wouldn't make it mean anything to our community. It was not even descriptive. By taking out the name Yakima, people wouldn't even know where his outfit was headquartered. And remember, it wasn't just Astria or Regional Health Yakima, but they in turn are controlled by a for-profit management company in Tennessee. That management company determines who the CEO will be, not their self-perpetuating a board of directors that is not subject to a vote. So it's very complicated and not desirable. So I think he made the right decision.
That was, I don't, we just made the recommendation. The board made the decision.
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
But coming from the negotiators, that meant a lot. And that included the CEO.
Okay, I have one more little thing. I like to refer to us as a district, because not all of us live in Snoqualmie. And we're a district. We have, for instance, lab outreach to carnation. We have a lot of things going on within the district, some are out of the district, actually. And I didn't feel like they were looking at, or recognizing that we are a district and we have obligations, and we also have ability to serve a larger population. We're not just a hospital.
Yeah, I think that's accurate, John. Are you ready for the next question?
Sure.
Next question is, what would we do differently?
I know that we have to move forward, and I think one of the things that would, you know, we've tried twice, and both times failed. So let's do something different. Maybe this time we'll have an executive team and somebody in the business community, like the manager of, there's two or three that we know that are in the economic development, to be like community representative, to be part of the executive team, maybe start with just one or maybe just one person first, with the, with our CEO. And from there you can expand so that we don't have to hire another person. If we have the right personnel to, you know, that has been, you know, very skillful in negotiating and is a businessperson and have done quite a bit of, you know, networking and all that, that will help. So that would be something different that I, probably that we can. And the other thing too is, I like it when we do a consensus like this, when we talk about it, all of us in one room to discuss and, and, you know, share our opinions and our, you know, anything that comes that we feel very strongly about, because it's always hard to just put it and, you know, and then submit it, because there's no interaction. We don't really know how everyone feels. It's different. This is a nicer setting where we can each, you know.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just jump in to make sure I understand, re-understand that comment, because what I think I hear you saying was that, that the process of having the negotiating team then reporting to the board wasn't as enjoyable for you as all, everybody talking. Am I right?
Yes, yes.
And that's what your comment is about.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to join in with what Emma just said, and that is, I don't think we need to sell potential affiliates on the hospital. They know our, the hospital, they know the quality of services here. What we need to sell is the potential of the growth of the community. And this is where I join with Emma in saying, let's get an impressive person from the Economic Development Board of Snoqualmie, North Bend, and so forth, to be part of our negotiating team. Because what we need to sell is the sizzle, the potential and actual, the ongoing growth in this area. Now that will be attractive to a partner. The fact that we have a hospital, they already know about that. That's not gonna impress them. But what will impress them is the potential out here with these tremendous growth that's ahead. I heard a speech just a week ago from a representative of the Economic Development Council in Snoqualmie, very impressive about what's ahead for this area. I think that's what they'll be sensitive to. So that's my suggestion. So that's my suggestion.
Might I ask who, was that Rob?
Yes.
Rob Watton.
From Amco Bank.
Yes, Rob, Rob.
Watson?
Watson, Rob Watson.
From Amco.
Amco Bank. He, he's a, he's a very special guy, really gets community.
Very, very smart.
And I haven't discussed the concept with him of, you know, being a negotiator, but I think his message is what we need in our negotiations. I appreciate commissioners serving as negotiators, but I don't think that's the best idea. I don't know how it operated at Overlake, but I doubt that any of their board members were in their negotiating team. It was probably staff and attorneys.
I don't think they had any board members. That they had plenty of attorneys.
Plenty of attorneys.
Yeah, and who else? It was, it wasn't lineup the first time we went in of people from other.
Those were executive staff members.
Okay.
But I, I just suggest we, as Emma was saying, you know, let's try something different. Let's not have board members being negotiators. Let's have our staff, particularly the CEO, and somebody like Rob Wooton, to make the first contact, to get the interest started. Don't overwhelm them with attorneys or consultants, just the two of them.
There is a not, there is that first step that, I agree with you, don't need a bunch of people who are gonna eventually be doing the due diligence and, and writing contracts. You want us to start with the relationship.
Clayton Fong is another one. He would be happy. Clayton Fong, he was the executive director for NAPCA and was a one-time president of the economic development as well. He's very, very schooled in negotiating.
I brought up someone that I wanted the board to look at a long time ago. I actually have talked, I had lunch with him, I bought him lunch. And he, he was one of the, yeah, he was one of the people that put together Starbucks.
Starbucks Business Plan.
And he lives in the community.
We have to stay with, in other words, it may be that a certain team of negotiators is good for this particular potential affiliate, but we might wanna change it with a different one for various chemistry reasons, don't you agree, Sean?
Yeah, I, whatever would work, but I definitely, one person I think to go out and know, has to know our, our district, our values, our goals and our board.
Thank you for saying district because we're not just a community. Our district and the hospital.
We have boundaries based on the laws, RCW.
That's the other thing I don't think Astria.
So somebody in the community would be ideal. I was in favor of a couple of people before, Howard Thomas, which I did not know at all other than meeting with him in 2013 and 14 during, or 14 and 15 during the first.
What happened is failed the first time.
I, I don't know anything about, because I wasn't involved in that.
Since you mentioned Howard, at our last meeting, I, I had indicated, I'd heard his name come up and I met with him. Had a very good discussion with Mr. Thomas and bright guy and a very capable negotiator. And his thinking was very much in line with what you're talking about in terms of the establishment of that initial contact and relationship. He said, he said, we want to have a couple people, somebody who you've brought in and your CEO go and make that initial contact and bring back to your board the potentials and, and as well as where you're at in terms of negotiating with, with those entities. He said, but you want somebody who negotiates for a living.
Yeah, and that's, I don't care who it is. I just want somebody that can get the job done and, and advocate for how, how many great things that we have at our hospital.
And we have, it's not just what we have now, but it's, it's the extra property, it's cash in the bank and, and it's a place to grow.
Well, we have many districts, district stakeholders that is very aware of our hospital that, you know, we mentioned, there's so many skilled, skilled negotiators, yeah.
Person, Howard Thomas, they both live in the community.
But I'd like to go pro bono first.
And Rob Watson, they get community.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, we had Howard Thomas and he did not give us a single report at all.
There was a reason for that, I, I will give you that. I will tell you the reason again and again and again. At that time, there was a different CEO involved. He didn't even wanna work with the CEO or our former counsel attorney. I'm not gonna go into the reasons. And there was a very big reason for not having public reports out there in the, in the interim process of actually trying to do an affiliation. But I, I get it and, and the reports is, is, he was working on other projects that would, the proprietary information that would have to be disclosed would be very difficult for me to, for him to deal with other projects and actually base pay or get the right pay for those projects when maybe he was giving us a discount or something. And that was the big problem. I don't think that the current concerns you had about that were valid under those circumstances.
I put that on the table with him when I met him and I came away with the same conclusion.
So who brought him in the first place, at the very start?
What conclusion did you come away with? It was that he had, he has some very legitimate reasons why he had to hold some of that information tight.
And not only that, as I recall, it was the board who asked him to suspend because we were exploring affiliation prospects and it would look very bad if we were talking with one organization while having a consultant look for others. So I think we were the ones that suspended his work.
Who brought him in the first place, from the very start?
Someone actually referred me to him and I don't remember who it was.
I, I remember, I don't, not that I remember, but from Howard's conversation, the initial contact happened because Howard was doing some work for Confluence Health in Winatchee. And actually Brian Roberts was doing some business with Confluence Health and he and the CEO were talking about where we were, where we were as an organization. And the CEO of Confluence said, well, there's somebody that you really ought to be talking to. And that was the introduction of Howard.
So that's how, I mean.
Well, and you know, we've heard during public comment about the Verden model. Howard Thomas is the one who implemented the Verden model in the Puget Sound area with Everett Swedish, that organization that did the merger with Peace Health and all that. I'm not quite sure how that went, but they, they've installed the Verden model with Swedish. And he is an expert on that. So one of the things we might wanna do so people get to know Howard that don't, or don't already know him, is ask him to come to a work session and tell us what a Verden model is and what was his experience.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind that, but I think let's try, that's just different, where we bring in district stakeholders that are also, you know, that they're probably gonna do it more to help our hospital before hiring somebody again.
He lives here.
Okay, yeah, and the others that we mentioned are also from here, that they're been with economic development, they're very, you know, schooled in negotiation as well, business people. And so let's try that route first, that's, and then if, you know, if those two or three that we thought would be a good community representative or district representative for our hospital to support our CEO, to go out there and, you know, build their case, maybe we could start there first. And then if they have, they said, well, you know, but then maybe look at another person that we will, because we're gonna end up paying again and again and again, that's it. So I'd like to get a pro bono person that has a passion, has passionate about helping our hospital grow and become more successful.
I wonder if we could move on to three, you've got, you know, limited time.
What winning principles and goals still apply today?
We spend a lot of time on values and I, I think financial stability somehow, we could design that in different ways. And branding.
I think one, two, three.
I, I would like us to have a brand where people look up and they see our sign and say, oh yeah, that's where I'm going. If you, if you put a sign like Maxi Care or for that matter Astria or something, just the brand won't draw a person. Now maybe over time you'll get referrals, personal contacts and so on, but I'd like to have a brand where just the brand itself draws people.
I have a, in my meeting with Howard, and he did do, by the way, the Verden deal has, draws its name from that very deal. It was created out of that. So Verden is actually what the hospital district renamed itself after the deal with Swedish.
Okay, I didn't know that. It's a very interesting.
Yeah, so they, they completely reinvented themselves as, as a district, said, we're not running a hospital anymore, but our mission is still to care for the people of this community. And they said, you know, what's a name that really embodies that? So they named themselves Verden. They're still a hospital, they're still quoted district, they still bring in tax money. They also get a lease payment from Swedish Providence because Swedish Providence still runs that hospital. But when, when I was talking to Howard about that deal, he let me know that within a week that hospital's volumes started to race upward because one of the very first things they did was they rebranded the hospital and put the Swedish name on the hospital. Now Swedish has made millions and millions of dollars of investment in that and it's a beautiful facility. If you haven't been there, it's, it's very nice.
That's where your bank account was.
I don't know about that, but the, the hospital has done very well with that brand and with that investment. But what I loved hearing from him is that brand created recognition and, and more people wanting to go to their own community hospital.
And therefore more revenue.
Correct. Sorry, I got off on tangent. You're talking about what are the goals that still apply today?
Wouldn't you say financial wellness and branding are the top?
And I also, I think branding drives the financial viability.
Right, and, and also on our values, it was that we need to move now. And I, I think that's true too, but I, I'm a little worried that if we move too quickly, that our potential partners are seeing, are gonna say, ah, knee jerk reaction. You failed at Overlake, you failed at Astria, and now you're doing a knee jerk reaction and coming to see us. Why didn't you come and see us earlier instead of send out an RFP? We, we got that kind of feedback, by the way, like, and I, my attitude is RFPs are for buying toilet paper. Personal contacts are for affiliation.
They, they are used for that, but I, you know, I've actually done some research on hospitals that successfully did their affiliation through RFP.
But in Western Washington, I think you'll find the successful mergers have been not through RFPs.
And what I was gonna say is I, I think that it is, if, if you take a look at, at the advice that hospitals get for pursuing affiliation, there comes a point, a decision point early on that is, are you going to, are you gonna RFP or are you gonna go out and talk individually? And the advice, you can do it either way. Howard and I had a very good conversation about this and he said, yes, you can go either way. But we've done the RFP.
We did it.
We, we done that RFP and I will admit there is a certain element of sterility to that process that, that we should, you know, if I had to say, what would we do different? I'd say, comment the, comment this question through relationship building. But we, you know, we had, we had some expectations for how this deal would, would, well, we had some goals, we had some goals that we wanted to achieve and we expressed those clearly in the RFP. And as some people in the community have said who saw the RFP, they said, wow, you really, you set your sights pretty high. Well, we did, so.
It was more of a wish list than having some kind of empathy on imagining how the potential partners might see what we were saying. Yes, it was shooting for the stars, but is that the best way? Isn't it something more realistic? I think conversations.
Yeah, I don't think we should narrow ourselves just to one, we should be more collectively a committee, a group of, you know, like-minded people, business people that, you know, can really, you know, understand the district and how we are all, you know, in sync with our goals and our vision. I think if we only just zero in on one person or, you know, I think a collective more of a community or district, you know.
I think there's something to be said for that, particularly if you're thinking healthcare. I mean, healthcare is intimate. It's not, it's not like any other business. So if you're doing healthcare and being business both, there are hard balance on how you do that, but you need both.
Very well said.
You need both.
But in every organization, business comes first because it's the finance.
You can't take care.
Lifeblood of the organization. And take care of people, we don't have the money to take care of.
If you're not successful business, you're not gonna be able to be there later.
If you don't take care of the people properly, you're not gonna get the money. So it all interacts.
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's balance to it. We need to balance it, yeah.
We talked about finances so much here and I value the opinion of Steve Daniel and I'd like to hear from him if he had something to offer on, on the financial side, that perhaps lessons learned from this experience from a financial perspective.
My thoughts, just, just my thoughts. Financial viability is still important. The, you know, I think we, we, I'm saying we, went in thinking that was taking on the bond then. Well, there are other ways. We've gotten all set it, there's branding, there's, you know, increasing what you do, increasing your service to the community with, that means volumes. And providing better service, being able to access better services, more services, the kind of services that, you know, maybe we don't offer, but the community wants. And there's a big need, this is a growing area. So, you know, financial viability and operational efficiency really are one and the same thing as I look at it. We've made some progress here. I think for the long term, affiliation from, or the, the district needs to go. So I, you know, I, I like, I agree with almost all the conversation around the table. I think, I think you're on the right track? We are on the right track. You, we, not the board, but we are on the right track, so.
Well, you know, yeah, yeah, it's the team. I mean, the board is here because we have staff and we're all, we all should have the same goals. And that's good healthcare for the community and a community that wants to come here and be viable at the same time.
Yeah, remember our overarching goal is community wellness.
Yes.
And that can include a lot of things.
It can, it can. And there are a lot of, there are other groups in the community that are concerned about wellness and the network is one of them.
And that's why this Verden model, I think, is interesting. We need to work closely with those groups.
And there's, and you know, when King County and the state have funds that are, can be used in healthcare, whether it's for mental health, early childhood, and that, that now it's from birth to, even the, the age group of eighteen to twenty-four year old males has become a real concern because they seem to have a hard time figuring out what they're doing. They get involved in drugs and alcohol and don't become professional, don't work. So there's, there's a lot. And in King County, those are all important issues and we're being taxed so that those issues can be addressed.
And that also includes a higher suicide rate for that.
Yes, yes.
And for elderly.
And the elderly, yeah. So you've got three, you've got suicide, you've got early childhood, that early childhood program goes from birth to the, to actually they had the twenty-four year old age, but it's mostly the eighteen to male, eighteen to twenty-four, not so much the women. And then there's the, the elderly and we do have certain things for the elderly and suicide, alcohol and drug, those are all, and homeless. Those are all things where King County is starting to say, this is an issue, how are we gonna address it? Here's this issue, how are we gonna address it? And there, there are a lot of organizations in this valley looking for that money and, you know, sending out, you know, and trying to get funds. Thank you. Grant requests, there are a lot of grants out there and they're in varying amounts.
Are we getting our share of grants for experimental programs and targeted programs?
I don't know that we as a board or the executive staff is actually.
I think there is opportunity there. We are working with the, the big, the big grant, that's through the accountable communities of health. We are working with the big grant, and that's through the accountable communities of health and accessing the redistribution of Medicaid funds. So Dr. Rickup and I are staying close to that issue. And a lot of that is money that will be going into communities to help with the factors that contribute to health and wellness.
Do we have a grant writer?
We do not have a, we don't employ them.
There are many things out there.
Contract for it.
And there are a lot of people calling after them.
Yeah, I get lots of grants from NIH and that they're sending application apps.
We have also access grant fund through the collaborative. And there's been a lot of work that we've done in terms of quality improvement and preparing ourselves for population health management. We actually have access and those funds have flowed to the collaborative hospitals. I don't know if you want to say more about that.
Yeah, we just finished off that $879,000 PERSA grant. So that just concluded in August, in September. And so yes, that was used to prep us for population health. And now we're in the process of applying for a $300,000 PERSA grant that will be in the continuation of that process.
Who's writing those grant proposals?
No, that's a big project. Healthcare, health facilities is the company's name that we contract, that the collaborative contracts with, to write those.
That's part of DOH?
No, it's independent.
Independent?
Yeah. A lady named Judy Pana owns the company. They do really good work.
Well, getting back to what we started with on this question, I don't want potential affiliates to think that we were turned down by Overlake and Astria. And someone will try to draw that conclusion. You know, you've tried twice, you've failed twice. Who's to know that you weren't turned down? Now, you tell us that you walked out and turned them down. But, you know, I think it's very delicate.
I think with Overlake, we never got to any, would you say, Dr. Wick? We didn't really get anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just talked and then did some stancing and it just kind of, you just decided that was it. Yeah.
I actually believe that we will have very interested people who had expressed interest through the letter of interest that we received in June, but they didn't submit a formal proposal. And I think those organizations will have a very receptive ear to us and asking them, you know... There's a couple of questions that I want to ask these organizations. Tell us about what it was that was appealing to you and why you expressed initial interest. Let's talk about why you didn't submit a formal proposal. What are some of the hurdles that you saw? How do we get past those?
I would guess that one of the hurdles was the amount of data we were requesting of them. A lot of work on their part. And it was almost insulting to some of them that we would ask such detailed questions.
Before we had the conversation?
Before we had the conversation. We needed an introduction to see if we're even on the same frequency. And then we could ask, in negotiations, you ask for these detailed statistics and financials and so forth. But don't do it up front. It just turns people off.
Talking to a long, long list of choir people. Talk about that, because that's what I've been saying.
Virginia to the choir.
I don't want to say I told you so, but...
You told us so.
She said, you know, look at the different road. It's not like we fail, I think, Dr. Wick, you're saying that you don't want out there saying that we fail. It's not. It's a mutual, you know, mutual separation. You know, we didn't say, you know, we didn't...
We walked away.
We walked away. Both parties walked away.
Well, because they didn't submit the material, I mean...
So it wasn't, yeah, I guess I shouldn't say that we didn't, yeah.
We're now on, how do we want to move forward? How do we, what do we see as plan B?
Well, I think that that's been discussed there pretty well.
Yeah, we've been... Well, what does the plan look like?
Our CEO could gather a few business, economic developers, negotiators, like a roundtable and kind of, you know, maybe invite them to, you know, share about their feelings about our hospital and what are some of the, you know, that they can help us with, you know, because this is also their district, their community. So I'm sure they'll be interested in it.
Well, there has to be some part of education in that because I see people all the time who don't understand what we are.
Here's the issue that I have about just fighting anybody that's great negotiating. How many times have you ordered something and you only talk to the salesperson? And they tell you one thing and what you get is something different? The salespeople, a lot of times, may or may not have all of, and I'm agreeing with you, Emma, about, we need to have somebody that is knowledgeable about our, as I said before, our district, our hospital, our board, and our situation.
Our community's values.
Yeah, and so if you don't get somebody, but the thing that you're gonna need to have eventually is someone that has actually put together this kind of a deal in the past. Because you cannot send a square peg into a round hole and expect to come out with a bunch of uniform shapes. And I use these old colloquialisms, but they really are very simple to understand. And I think that's, you're gonna get, you're gonna need somebody that, and I don't care who it is, like I said, as long as they can get the job done. And one person to work with that we can all work with would be great. If you want to have a symposium with these folks to see what their input might be and get their, volunteer their time to give us some helpful information, perhaps, that'd be great. But you're ultimately gonna need to have one person that has put together deals like this before, period.
Yeah, ultimately, that would be great.
As a concrete suggestion, that's also, I doubt that you can get these CEOs or negotiators together in a symposium. A nice, idealistic idea, but I don't think it would work. I'd suggest that the CEO, often we depend for leadership from the staff side to guide us as well. Give some thought to what he hears here tonight. Contact some of the people that have been suggested that could be part of a negotiating team and come up with a schedule, a plan on how to proceed and when we might make appointments and lay it out and just keep the board informed. But I would trust Tom to make a decision on who should be part of that team.
And I support you, Commissioner Pollard. I think that's a good thought. And I also think that, you know, I was one of those that was really upset with Howard because I didn't see or hear anything. But he lives in the community and that...
He's in North Bend.
Yeah, which makes a difference. If you're in this community and you know that you're paying tax dollars for something, you're gonna want it to be viable. You're not gonna just chase dreams. You're gonna want something that you know well or wants for the community.
Well, whoever we get, we need to continue, all of us, educating the public about what this district is and what the hospital has to offer. Because I...
I think that's true.
And use, you know, use the facility.
I agree with Commissioner Spikers that there is a need for someone who has done deals in their career. We, here, in the end, what we want is a good deal, right?
A win-win situation.
We want a win-win situation, but a deal nonetheless. And so if you want a deal, you get someone who's done deals. And I highly advocate for someone who understands how to do deals. And I highly advocate for someone who understands this hospital. That's me. To be paired in getting this work done.
Yeah, and so whoever that person is, I think you need to require that person to provide us all the deals that that person had made, not just, you know, so that at least we need to follow up to see what was, how it turned out to be. Because we can't just take somebody's word for granted. We need to do our due diligence. I mean, I'm a skeptic for most of my life because I've seen enough that I feel like, oh, okay. Because I used to be so gullible and, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, that's wonderful. So now I'd like to do my due diligent work. So, you know, he's telling me, "Oh, by the way, you know, you made a deal." "Who is this person?" I'd like to know, you know? And so I can find out whether, how did you go about it? Yeah, things like that. So that's what I'd like to follow up.
I hear Emma saying is, Tom, you need to do diligence on picking...
Picking the right people.
Partner or the team that will do the negotiations. You've made some very good comments about it. It's nice if they have a track record. But it's also good if they are like Wooten or Rob Wooten, an advocate for the entire community and can characterize it in a colorful way that will captivate the partner's imagination about the potential out here. We don't need to tell them what goes on in our hospital so much. They kind of know that. We need to sell the sizzle, the massive growth that's occurring out here. It's the only growth area. It's the fastest growth area in King County and one of, maybe in the state. And that's what we need to sell. And Tom can come in with the details about what the hospital can do and find staff we have and all of that. But we need that kind of a process, seems to be. Do you guys agree?
I think you're bringing, first of all, if they're interested to come in and talk to us. And then, and then tell us what they could do for us, you know? We'll be open to any point personally can get the job done.
And I'm not envisioning a consultant that we pay. I'm envisioning a community member who is enthusiastic about the hospital and what it means to the community. That's my image. I frankly don't want any consultants at this point. It's down the way, if we come to a conclusion. First of all, some of the organizations that we might affiliate with have their vast legal staff and they can take over the costs that were estimated by Cave and Huthner at about $80,000 for the legal side of a merger. But we could get a lot of help out of some of the affiliates that we might envision because they already have fantastic legal staff. And all I have to do is do the work and we can approve or disapprove, you know? So that's the way I say it. What do you think about that, David? You're an attorney.
I'm not gonna be with my attorney hat on, okay? I'm a board member and I'm not here. I don't, the only thing I'm thinking, how do you go from, say, Rob Wooten to someone that can get the deal done? That's the issue that I have. And will Rob want to come in for free? And what can he give us? I know there's a lot of great things, I don't know him. So I don't know what he can give us. I don't know. It sounds like he, from what I hear, he's a great person and be a good person.
Press speaker.
Yeah, so he'd be a great person to talk with us. But I like to see action. And, you know, talking is one thing and having an arm and...
That's right.
You don't have to just waste money ultimately in the long run.
And it seems to me, piggybacking on that, as long as I've been on the board, we've been doing a lot of talking and nothing has happened.
So we kind of know what we want. I think you put down financial stability, branding maybe number one. I think, tell me if I'm wrong, diversity, expand services and provide community wellness. I mean, that's, I mean, we know what we want.
So you think a jump...
We know what we have, but maybe somebody else can expand on what we have too. I don't know, somebody that knows what they're talking about.
Well, that's exactly, somebody who knows what healthcare is. Because healthcare is a whole, it's like a whole different realm of business.
It is.
And I hate to say business because those of us who are in the medical field, it'll happen.
Now, one of the things we could consider is to invite potential partners to come in and make a presentation. For example, let's talk Rob. I know of him most. He's a member of the Snoqualmie Economic Development Council or the Snoqualmie Valley Economic Development Council, as I recall. In that role, without our having to pay him a consultancy fee or something, he could come and tell us about the future development of the valleys, the kind of things I've been discussing, and how important the hospital is. And then you can judge, is this the guy that would make a good partner for Tom to go out? And there could be other people that have been mentioned that we could invite to come in as a community member to share their perspective.
I think we have, like, you suggested Rob. I'd like to suggest Clayton Form, who is, who was a National Executive Director for the Asian Council, Pacific Asian Council on Aging Center. And so he is also very schooled in business, including health for seniors and other populations, you know? So I thought he would be good. And then, of course, David, Howard, maybe the three can be a speaker to talk about themselves and see which of those three that we think might be, might fit our, you know, the potential person that we might be interested in.
If you're interested in the community representative volunteer...
Yes.
Howard would not fit that profile.
Okay, those two, I mean, Clayton would be willing to.
Nothing against Howard. This is Howard's business. This is what he does. So we want to respect that.
Sure, I understand.
And what I hear, and David was talking about this, the challenge of transition from having a community representative person initiating with me some of these initial conversations. And at some point, you need to morph that into, now it's time to do due diligence and start to negotiate this deal. And that's where you bring in someone like Howard Thomas because that's what he does for a living.
Exactly. But I think the first thing is, let's focus on the first thing. And that is find interest. And if we don't do that, then the morphing is not even relevant. So we can, we'll mature and morph as, after we've gotten the expression of interest, a mutual expression of interest. That's the key right now at the beginning.
What if our next...
Special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting like what we're having tonight. If we have a couple of people come and talk to us.
Or one. It may be competitive, you know? One at a time, I think.
Yeah, well, I think two or three. I mean, we're all coming here. And if they talk to us for 20 minutes or a half hour, that's an hour and a half. And we're already almost to an hour and a half in this meeting. That at least gives us an opportunity to hear from a couple of different people. Now, maybe, I'm not the dictator here. We all have to agree.
But I agree. I think that's, you know, we're not bringing in a slew of people. Two or three is good to get different...
It may be very difficult to get three or two even on the same night. I would leave it to you and Tom to work out something like that, whatever makes sense. Does that make sense to you?
I want to be careful with the dynamic of a volunteer coming into what almost feels like an interview. So we have to make it very collegial.
So maybe coffee or something?
A very good point, very collegial.
You don't have to drink, you can drink Coke while...
But you know, like, for instance, Rob and maybe the person that Emma is suggesting, Clayton.
Clayton.
One of the things they do is outreach to the community. This isn't unusual for them. They make presentations. As a matter of fact, I think Rob is on the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber of Commerce as the economic development guy, as well as his city position, if I'm not mistaken.
He's on the Economic Development Commission, as am I. And I see him once a month at those meetings. That's how I know Rob.
Yeah, and he's also on the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber's counterpart of that organization. So I guess what I'm saying is that these are guys that are used to making presentations and they'll be delighted to come in here and make it. That's part of their job. Is that right? That's part of their job. Is that right?
Well, he's, he's a volunteer on all those organizations because he runs bank. That's his job, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't agree with his politics. That's okay. He's more conservative than I am.
Clayton is retired.
That's okay. I don't care. He's knowledgeable and he's impressive. That's the key.
Well, I, not to say these people are not whatever, but if we're talking about a hospital affiliation, we need to have people who are educated in the medical mood of the world.
And how, yeah, and it is its own entity. It's different. But it's, but it's still a business, more a business now than it used to be. I mean, it's nice to have both of them.
It has different nuances all the way around.
That's what I think Tom provides by being part of the team. And then we've got the business side that we've mentioned. It's so important. Anyway, go apart. Tom?
Remember, we can't make any decisions.
But, but I'm really good at hearing a, um...
A philosophy or thoughts.
Hearing a flow, a flow of thought and philosophy from this board and moving forward in what I think always are consistent with what I'm hearing. And I can do that.
Have you gotten what you need from this meeting?
I have. It's been really helpful.
How did the commissioners felt? We all felt good about what we've talked about? We're going pretty...
I guess I'll know it when I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Case.
That's a famous slow, uh, famous quote in a famous case.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
We don't need to go any further than that, David.
I believe it when I see it.
No, I'll know it when I see it.
You'll know it when you see it, okay. I said, I believe it when I see it.
All righty, we ready then to, let's see, what do we have? 7/17. So, okay. Are we done? I think we've had a good discussion and I think we're ending that with some...
With your CEO understanding, um, your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, do we have anything on, under other?
I think we've already did everything.
Okay, so not hearing any other public comment?
Other was the, um, what, the governance, the, the, the... Mas Adams that they sent us, they sent about to, uh, was I, you know, I'm talking about?
No, I don't.
The governance, Mas Adams and, um, Atani, um...
Skip?
Not Skip, no.
No.
I don't care. Atani. She was going to present something that's not, they're not, they're not in charge just about... It's more an update on several different, uh...
A little gal that talked to you and I have...
Yeah, afterward, right. Yes, right. I thought that's something we can talk about because I thought it was timely to hear about. Yeah, the future, right. Future work study session. That's my other...
We did, we did put, um, the work study schedule for this month originally was to, um, have an, an update on, from Steve, on compliance. And I was going to, and I have a presentation already and done on accomplishments of 2017. I'm really anxious to, to show that. Um, we will put that into the April meeting. Um, we also have in April a presentation from Holly Greenwood from the Collaborative talking about all the work that... It's really impressive, the work being done in the Collaborative right now. And I really, I'm very anxious for you to see that and get, get your eyes into that body of work that all 13 hospitals have been doing together. And they just put out their annual report and we'd be getting that to you as well. Um, and, and I don't know if we can squeeze it all into April. We maybe, we've asked Holly then to come to the main meeting.
I know we do.
That's, that's some topics that we...
So we do work study. Is there, like, if we were to invite two representative to talk, to follow up on the affiliation, can we, can we set a meeting as special meeting?
We can always...
Not just study session, just a special meeting too. Because we don't want to wait another month. We want to move on and get it going.
We can do it during our each regular board meeting.
Well, and also there's no reason we can't have two work study sessions in a month. That's the way Evergreen does it.
Yeah, I think we should at least.
But also for me in April. Um, by the way, did we have a finance meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Yes.
When?
Next Tuesday.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seventh, I think, yeah.
Are you serious?
And then twenty eighth is the medical.
Yes, at least it's on my calendar, yeah.
It's crossed out on mine.
Oh.
Why is it crossed out?
Are you going to be available?
None of us snuck into your phone.
It's crossed out.
Gremlins.
I didn't do it.
Gremlins.
And I didn't do it.
Okay, I'll redo it at 11:30, right?
Correct. Twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh, that's a Tuesday.
Medical is twenty eighth.
What, what day is that?
Still.
I don't have it down on...
It's Tuesday.
Mine's on my cell phone. Mine's on my calendar.
Didn't we also have a projected, uh, that Dr. Whitkop was giving, going to give us a quarterly quality report?
That's on the schedule, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have our medical committee under twenty eighth, which is a Wednesday. Right? Still Wednesday, our medical committee is still, this coming Wednesday as well.
So yes, we'll always have a quarterly update on, on, um, quality, compliance, and on our tactical plans. All right, that's good.
Okay.
April third.
Yes, John.
Not the twenty eighth? I'm sorry.
He had some public comment for us.
Scott, yes, yes, okay. Are we ready to hear a public comment?
Just one other thing, and that is that at least one, maybe two or three of our commissioners are going to be attending the annual Department of Health Conference or Washington State Hospital Association Conference.
May.
And I suggested that since it's costing us about $500 a person to participate, that maybe those who go could give us a short report on what they learned. I believe you're going to be going to that too, yes. So among those who go, maybe we could get a short report on questions for... Thank you.
All right, public comment.
I thought you said the twenty eighth. I'm sorry, because when I asked for clarification, I'm sorry, I was still looking at other medical committee meeting. It says twenty eighth and, and, you know, it's, because I put it on my calendar. Now, April thirty is not on my calendar.
Why, why we work on calendars?
Remember I sent for clarification? I said, I said, okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Go for it.
Public comment.
From a public point of view, this was a good meeting, just a few comments. You talked about a public hospital and branding. And from my point of view, when you talk about something like that, it's not having someone else, an overlay or someone else, come into the community and then operate the hospital the way you'd like it to. If you want their branding, they should be doing it the way that they have because their brand is their promise to their patients and to their community. And you're bringing them in in order to do it their way. And you just do the due diligence to make sure that they have the abilities to service the, uh, the community well. And then, you know, let them do what they do best the way that they need to do it. It's their branding that you want. It's their way of doing it. You also talked about community wellness. Well, that's what's left over. So I'd hope that you would negotiate for capacity so that you in your role in terms of doing the community wellness will have enough there to be able to make an impact. And it's up to you to decide where to put the money. Is it suicide prevention? Is it the O D S? Is it elder care? That's where the real fun is and that's where you can make the biggest impact going forward. So if you have a negotiator, the negotiator is, you know, comes in and negotiates the deal with the brand that you run and then something for the community health that you want. And then it's, I would say it's up to the affiliate to go out and to get community support. That's retail, you know, they're selling themselves. Where you go, be wholesale support for what you're doing. Go to the community leaders, get them on board for whatever it is that you want. The presidents of non-popular organizations or whoever it happens to be. And while you're at it, you know, get their input because they might have some ideas and some insights that you don't have. And it's they who are the ones that you're going to want to serve anyway. So instead of waiting until the end of this process and say, oh, okay, this is what we've done for you. Co-create what you want to do if you're going to go with the community wellness model. Co-create it with the community so that by the time the ink is drawn on the contract, they're up and running as well. So, you know, so far, so good. I think you're, you know, you're well along the way. Feel good about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, upcoming board meetings. Regular business meeting is Thursday, April 12th, 2018, 6:30, this room. And work study will be Wednesday, April 25th, 6:00 p.m. Also, this room, I said that.
Correct.
Correct. Do I have a motion to...
Move the adjourned.
I second. So any discussion? All favor say aye. Say aye. opposed? Yeah, aye.
Thank you.